Welcome, I'm Viola Gonzalez, President of the League of Women Voters of Oakland. Thank you for joining us to meet the candidates running for City Council District Two. This meeting is being made available with Spanish and Cantonese interpreters. Welcome to Latna Miller, Hernan Lafitte, Weiqun Tong, and Harvey Tai, who are helping us interpret this evening. We'll take a minute for the Spanish and Cantonese interpreters to each give us instructions in language so participants can access the correct Zoom channel. If you could proceed.
Hola estimados, estimadas. Para acceder a interpretación al español, si estás en una computadora, presiona el icono del mundo en la parte inferior de la pantalla. Haga clic en Interpretación y elija Español. Si estás en un celular o tableta, busca los tres puntos donde dice más, haga clic en Interpretación y elija Español. Así podrá escuchar interpretación al español de las oradores en inglés. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, in Cantonese.
Ah, how come this is all together now? I come on now here, some guys, I go home and see you with the day you could hear. Come now, just a guy, he's so young, he's a广东话的继续传译的话呢. Cheng Li, now, he's a son, get a苹果底部呢. The工人选行单里边呢, he want to go地球图标呢, he come in ha ne. Come now, just ah, he, the go, he, a孙行的里边呢, he got, he go, he. 应该还是中文啊,我估计应该中文哈, I'm Chinese的. Come now, just a, he, you will can do, like, I同同事的, he go, he继续传译的服务的啦. Come, you go, he, ah, you,用紧的, he平板电脑或者智能手机呢,可能你见到的三个豆点. Ah, come go,三个豆点呢, come, you go, he可以是选择, he go, he语言翻译. 然后呢, he里边he got, he中文怎么样嘅. Come, just, he好荣幸能够为大家服务. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oakland is served by eight city council members. One is elected at large and seven by district. Each of Oakland's seven districts has one council member with a four-year term. There are no term limits. The council sets policy for city departments, can change local laws for things like zoning permits and licenses or local taxes. The city council approves city contracts and the city budget. The League is here to help you make informed choices. We use a few simple rules to make sure you get balanced information and all the candidates are heard equally. To ensure the community has a voice, the audience was invited to send questions in advance. Those questions have been sorted by a team of League leaders. However, the candidates do not get the questions in advance. It is my pleasure to introduce our moderator, who is going to run the program this evening, Claudia Burgos. By day, Claudia is Director of Legislative Affairs and Community Relations for AC Transit, and she'll take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Viola. Welcome to the candidates and thank you to everyone that has joined us this evening. So just quickly, I'm going to remind the candidates of some key ground rules. Each candidate is invited to make a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement and will be allowed a one-minute for a closing statement. Each candidate will have one-and-a-half minutes to answer each question. Then we're, we're going to switch up the order so that you take turns answering questions. The order has been randomly chosen. And to keep the discussion flowing, candidates will be expected to keep answers to one-and-a-half minutes. Yes, you're going to be timed. You'll see a little timer here with the name timer. Clock, we can all see that. And as moderator, I might have to cut you off so we can stick to a schedule. I hope I don't have to do that. So welcome to our two candidates for City Council District Two. They are Nikki Fortunato-Buss and Harold Lowe. So now I'm going to invite each candidate to make a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement. We flipped the coin earlier today, so we're going to start with candidate Harold Lowe.
Thank you. I'm a generation, I'm a fourth-generation Oaklander born to teenagers in this district. My father drowned when I was seven and I grew up in poverty. I missed over sixty days of school in one year alone because I couldn't afford bus fare. My mother was homeless twice with six children in this district, and my eight-year-old brother was killed by a drunk driver in this district. My first night driving after I received my license, I was pulled over by police in East Oakland and then in Piedmont. Now, I don't need to be told about the violence, the homelessness, the poverty. I've lived my entire life in Oakland and I'm a product of all of it. The Oakland I knew, even under the worst of times, had support systems in school, parks and recreation, the church and business community. We still had banks and major grocery stores and retail shops in my neighborhood in East Oakland. That doesn't exist anymore. African-American Studies major, mastered in public administration, so I could help my community. I've worked in eight industries and I'm a licensed financial planner, and I'm a diversity consultant where I work with organizations to hire local and small businesses which employ union workers. I even married a woman from Oakland. And we have three kids, all of whom are fourth-generation Oakland Public Schools, and we've lived in our district for twenty-five years. I'm the board chair for Oakland Lacrosse, the district commissioner for Scouts, committee chair for Oakland Rotary, and I chair the Oakland Measure G $20 million Library Fund. And I have twenty more years of service to Oakland just like this. I decided to run for office because it was time. We had leaders fully invested in Oakland and fully aware of what it takes to bring the spirit of diversity and hope back to this city.
Thank you, Harold. Nikki, you're next.
Thanks for having me. First, I want to send my condolences to the families and loved ones who have been impacted by gun violence yesterday and over the last week and share my commitment to working together for a safer Oakland. We all love Oakland deeply. This town and District Two has been my home for twenty-five years. I got my start as a community organizer in Chinatown, advocating with Chinese immigrant women garment workers for their fair wages. The workplace struggles of my parents, both immigrants from the Philippines, taught me to stand up for justice and be persistent, to do what's right and make a difference. Since becoming your council member four years ago, I've been listening and partnering with you and our neighbors to take action to build a safer, healthier, and more equitable city. It's heartbreaking what's happening here. I know many of you are fearful to walk in your neighborhoods, upset by so many people living on our streets, and even considering moving. And as a woman, a mother, a survivor of violence, I feel that fear, anger, and sadness too. I want more than anything to leave this pandemic and its fallout behind us to rebuild the connections and supports we previously have. And that is what I have focused on, from the state's strongest local COVID eviction moratorium to a new crisis response program in the fire department and deeper investments in violence prevention and youth programs. Working together, we launched successful initiatives that we can scale up to expand our response to crime, homelessness, and core services in our district. Thank you.
Thank you both. I'm going to now move to the first question and we're going to start with Nikki. And the question is, what are your top three priorities and what challenges will you need to address to implement them?
So first, my number-one priority is safe, healthy neighborhoods. We know that rising crime and violence touches every corner of our city and neighborhood, and each family deserves safe and clean neighborhoods, fair treatment, and results. There's an important role for police to play, which is responding to and solving serious and violent crimes, and I've been working to ensure that. There's also an important role for a comprehensive public safety system that includes violence prevention and investment in the root causes of violence and economic inequality. My second priority is housing as a human right. We cannot continue to see more and more Oaklanders displaced and more and more Oaklanders pushed out of their homes and onto our streets. I'm proud to have utilized public land in District Two for public good for homelessness solutions as well as future affordable housing. We need to continue that we are also creating homeownership opportunities and protecting renters from unfair rent hikes and evictions. Thirdly, we need to invest in our communities. That means making sure that we get the core services that we all deserve, investing in our parks. Like I've been able to invest in Lincoln Square Park and in the coming term in San Antonio Park as well as Clinton Square Park. We need to make sure that we're activating our cultural hubs in our business districts as well.
Thank you. Harold, same question.
Thank you. There are seven challenges in Oakland, but the first three that I want to address, public safety. We've had a decidedly different viewpoint in public safety. I want to increase the police force and I want to collaborate with community prime prevention groups and really enforce existing laws and look to creative and tap ways to stop crime. We've never included in the last four years anything with church groups or religious groups or some of these organizations that we've worked with in the past. Public safety is a challenge, but it becomes even more enhanced when we have leadership that wants to reduce the workforce by fifty percent. Job creation and economic development. I've never been a part of any conversation in this entire course where we've talked about job creation and economic development. We are unable to solve crime. It doesn't matter how many police officers we have, all these other measures for nonprofit organizations engagement, if we don't focus on having opportunities for people to feed themselves and their families. We currently don't have any economic development plan or job creation plan in our leadership, and they don't know how to enhance Oakland's four underdeveloped engines to help create growth and to bring people back. Multi-unit housing. We need to support mixed-unit housing projects. We need to be able to provide lower fees and barriers for people to be able to create ADUs in Oakland, to be able to look at the cost of materials going up and Oakland raising its race accordingly. We need to be able to have more units. The Bay Area has five-hundred thousand fewer units than we're supposed to have, and we're going to have housing inequities unless we're able to meet that challenge. We also need to be able to support people.
Harold, all right, Harold. Sorry, sorry to interrupt. I told you I would cut you off if I needed to, so you're out of time. We're going to start question number two with you, Harold. Question two, if you are elected, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in Oakland? And what are your ideas to encourage citizen engagement and pride in the city?
The, I, I've always been reared in the notion that you needed to be able to get a grassroots of diversity support. I plan to have two different councils. The first council I want to have really focuses on racial healing. We have a lot of disconnect in this district in particular, and it's permeated throughout Oakland. The, the problems that we've had and not being able to support Chinatown, not being able to support Little Saigon, has really caused a fracture in the racial harmony that we've experienced for so many years. I happen to have Asian ancestry, and I understand the importance of what it is to have people who can communicate across racial lines. I want to be able to have a group of community service providers. I want to have a group of clergy and religious leaders to be able to, to bridge that divide, and that's going to be an ongoing group for me. I want to have staff that look like the community. I think every person who's on city council needs to have African-American staff leadership. I want to make sure that the second group that I create comes with a cadre of people who come from youth, come from organizations that feed our community, and they represent people who come from the business community to address some of their concerns as well. And I want to be able to convene this quarterly. I will also hold office hours and I will also have something called Lowe's Leaders, where we highlight those people who would provide a great service to us in our community.
Thank you, Harold. Nikki, same question.
So as a community organizer for two decades, my approach is to listen, knowing that our residents are the most familiar with the issues in their neighborhoods, and that also means they have the most information and ideas about the solutions. And that has been my approach in the neighborhood level work I've done as well as the legislation that I have been able to pass. I have office hours. Well, let me step back and say, when I, before I was inaugurated, I held a town hall to develop priorities with the district, and I will do that again. I have in-person office hours in our parks twice a month that rotate throughout our district. When we have our budget, both our mid-cycle and our two-year budget, I do a survey with our constituents as well as town halls, and I am the only council member that has conducted my town halls in multiple languages, English, Spanish, Chinese, including Cantonese and Mandarin as well as Vietnamese. When I worked on the business tax, for example, I worked collaboratively with all stakeholders, including businesses of all sizes, and I'm glad that the Chamber of Commerce worked with me and they have endorsed that business tax measure that will be on the ballot. I constantly have community events. On October fourteenth, I will be doing a ceasefire walk with Faith in Action East Bay and our faith community through Little Saigon with that community. And on October twenty-fifth, I'll be doing a community event on human trafficking with the community, with city staff and survivors of human trafficking.
Thank you, Nikki. Question number three, on this one, I'm going to start with you, Nikki. Small businesses and women-owned businesses have not been granted equal access to city contracts. How would you rectify this issue?
This, this is true. This has been incredibly frustrating, and this is why we have a disparity study that is in the works. That study is being updated with more current data so that we can look at minority contracting as well as women-owned contracting and really give more opportunities in a systemic way by changing our systems to allow for more Oakland-based participation and more participation from women and people of color. When this question was asked of me before, I also said, I'm not going to wait until that disparity study is done and until the council updates our contracting rules. One of the things that I am doing, given that the East 12th Street parcel in my district is now going to be two affordable housing projects, is working with the newer affordable housing developer to partner with minority contractors in that project. That is also something that I have done in other economic development projects. When I first came into office, the redevelopment of the Kaiser Convention Center was very contentious. I brought stakeholders together through a town hall, and I supported negotiations on a community benefits agreement with the Black Arts Movement Business District CDC. So that development is moving forward, and I've supported both the project labor agreement as well as minority and women-owned contracting through that project. So I will continue to do that as there are opportunities in my district.
Thank you. Harold, same question.
This is a citywide problem. It's not just a district-wide problem. And quite frankly, we don't need another disparity study. We can use the data that we received a decade ago to be able to go forward on this. I have a background where I work with organizations to place low, local, small, minority, women-owned businesses into positions of construction, into business of helping to develop and participate in the process in Oakland. I'm doing that in Oakland, in San Francisco, and in San Jose, just for example. And the challenge that we have is that, quite frankly, organizations like the minority business developers have not been listened to. They've not been given opportunities, and the projects that have been discussed were projects that included minority contractors, and those projects were removed. I'm immediately going to go back to the table to make sure that those projects happen. The projects that have been mentioned for lower income, they're, they're not funded. The opportunities for our folks, we can't wait years to be able to work on projects because someone wants to provide some support for special groups, and these people don't have the ability to work. We should go back to the board and commit to the raw, the rules that we had when we planned the last disparity study, where we're going to have twenty-five percent engagement in the community, and I'm fully committed to that.
Thank you, Harold. Question number four, I'm going to start with you, Harold. Currently, the city budget is being balanced by not filling over seven hundred city staff positions. Therefore, residents are not being served at the level that they should be. What would be your approach to solving these problems?
It's a, it's a chicken or the egg. If you don't hire people to have services, you can't bring in the revenue from the services, and then you, you're driving people out of the city. There are forty-six positions just in law enforcement alone, where we have two thousand calls that come in a day, and we don't have the ability to be able to cover those. The first priority is to hire those four HR staff positions that we have in place. We need to make the effort to keep this, this city fully staffed. We're not even fully open. City Hall's closed. You won't find anybody in City Hall right now. The notion of us being able to function as the forty-fifth-largest city in America right now is not an option. We have to make sure that we are fully staffing the city and to keep our commitment to the people to, to keep the jobs open. I believe that we have to make sure that we have the people in place that hire the people who are there, and that's got to be our number-one priority, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's the other service agencies, whether it's working with the people who are the unhoused. We don't have the ability to be able to service them because we don't have enough people in place. It really is an embarrassment to have twenty-five percent of our, our workforce unavailable, and it's unacceptable. And I think that's the first priority that has to happen with the new administration.
Thank you, Harold. Nikki, same question.
This has been an ongoing issue for Oakland, unfortunately, and it's one that I have tackled throughout my tenure. With the recent budget that we passed, we added eight new human resources positions. Those are being filled, and we need to make sure that we have that capacity to drive filling the, the positions. The other thing that I did with this budget is I supported a strong labor agreement for all of our city workers, and that includes not only our civilian workers, but also our public safety workers, police and fire. And so we now have the strongest contracts, especially for those hard-to-fill positions in public works and Department of Transportation, so that we can better attract and recruit people as well as hire and retain them. And at the end of the day, you know, given that Viola shared the role of the city council, it's important to remember that we have a job passing legislation, passing a balanced budget. It's the role of the mayor and their administration in, to implement the budget and the policies that we pass. I have supported an audit of our human resources system because this issue has persisted, and we have to address whatever the structural issues are that underlie this ongoing problem with our vacancy crisis because we aren't delivering the services that Oaklanders deserve.
Thank you. Question number five, going to start with you, Nikki. What changes do you propose to improve and expedite the permitting process for residents and builders to ensure public safety?
So this is an issue that, again, the council has been working on. We have a one-stop permitting counter. It is, it's been operating just a few months, and so I think we need to make sure that it is fully operational, that it is effective, that we are getting real-time feedback from people who come to that counter, whether they're seeking a permit from Planning and Building or Public Works or the Department of Transportation or Fire. We have to make those, those systems work. And this is another area where we have huge vacancies, especially in our planning department. I constantly hear from businesses, developers, who have problems with getting their permits, which means they're not able to build and we're not able to, to collect taxes. So the, the, one of the powers the council has is the ability to request informational reports so we can see how these things are working. And so it would be timely to request an information report on our one-stop to see how it's working or not working, give the public an opportunity to weigh in around the issues they are seeing. And we also have coming to council very soon a response to a grand jury report in terms of fire safety that I think will be quite relevant to improving our permitting and our safety system overall.
Thank you, Nikki. Harold, same question.
Again, I, I think that our budgets determine what our priorities are as a city. We've never made this department a priority. We've had two people managing a stack of permits. We've never really recognized that Oakland is on the move, and we're trying to be able to make a more robust Oakland. We haven't given any support to this department to make sure that the department can be fully staffed and to be able to address these issues. I hear many, many business, many, many adults talk about how they have to wait months to have this, this arcane system with response time and not following anything. I think we need to modernize the system. Individuals need to be able to see where they are in queue. We need to be able to follow up with things with less paperwork. We need to be able to do it electronically. We need to be able to have a tracking system, a report card. We need to, we need to revamp the system. We're not giving people an opportunity, and by the way, it costs too much. There is a, there is a friend of mine who's in the district who lives about a block and a half away, and he and his wife have two children. They're not remodeling for some special ADU or fourplex or selling. He just want to remodel their house because it's a hundred years old, and they have to spend twenty-five thousand dollars out of their own pocket to do that. Most of us, we have a very old district. Most of us have to spend thousands of dollars for this arcane system that doesn't work to be able to pay the city, and I, I find it regrettable that I'm hearing that it's, it's costing us revenue. We should be looking at what we're doing for the people as opposed of our pocketbooks.
Thank you, Harold. Question number six, I'm going to start with you, Harold. Transportation is key to a successful city, and it involves coordination with other transit agencies, businesses, and stakeholders. Can you give us an example of when you successfully brought together competing interests to reach a successful solution?
Well, I, I'm not a government official, but I was the executive director for the National Association Minority Contractors a decade ago. And when we were talking about creating a bus, the rapid transit system, rapid transit in, in, in East Oakland through Berkeley and through Albany, it was a variety of different people. In our district, we had Little Saigon, who was being adversely affected because they didn't want the buses in front of their community. I was very instrumental in working with some of our local transit organizations and working with the, the bicycle organizations to make sure that we provided a lot of support, a lot of education, looking at how we were going to be able to work with BART and with AC Transit and extending it through San Leandro. It's a challenge because we're, we're taking this rapid system and we're changing the lanes, and we're changing communities, and it has traffic associated with it. And needless to say, every community, every two miles, there was a disconnect. And so I was proud to say that I was a part of that organization with other council members in the past to be able to make that happen. And I, I'm also a very strong supporter of having a more robust system, like I, I support of Link 21. I think that we should have this combination of rail and transit and open spaces, and I'm certainly on the forefront right now, working with some other counties, making that happen, and I'm on a listening tour, working with businesses right now in over twenty counties.
Thank you, Harold. Nikki, same question.
So with a bus rapid transit that goes through, you know, San Leandro all the way into downtown and through, you know, through International, I was working with a number of businesses, you know, in my district in collaboration with the other council members who also have part of the BRT to deploy the remainder of small business assistance grants. And there were a lot of challenges, a lot of issues. COVID hit, and one of the things I was able to do after working with AC Transit, our Department of Public Works and businesses who were impacted, is not only look at how we could adjust, you know, parking, red zones, and, and other ways to improve and balance the BRT and their need for parking for their customers, I also put forward legislation that, that created a COVID fund of up to ten thousand dollars for general operating. I have also been very engaged with my community around traffic violence. For example, International and Sixteenth Ave, there was a tragic, tragic traffic fatality. I've worked with pedestrian and community and bicycle advocates to work with the inter-agency liaison committee that as council president, I helped form between AC Transit and the city of Oakland, and we have collectively put together eight hundred thousand dollars for rapid response and rapid build, not only in that intersection, but among eight to nine blocks of International.
Thank you, Nikki. Moving on to question number seven, I will start with you, Nikki. We have lost a lot of revenue from the closures of businesses downtown due to COVID. Therefore, what do you see as the future of downtown Oakland and its economic growth?
So this is a really great question. One of the most recent informational reports I brought forward as part of the process of updating our business tax was a report on how we can support small businesses. And one of the things that has frustrated me is that we don't have a comprehensive economic development strategy for the city as a whole, nor do we have staff who can fully deploy that strategy. And we haven't followed through on the small business task force that have come up with solutions time and again. There was one in twenty seventeen. There was another one during the beginning of the, of COVID, and those strategies and all of that work has not yet been deployed. And so when the voters pass the progressive corporate business tax and we're able to raise revenue, we will not only be able to provide some tax relief to our small businesses, but we'll have additional revenue to finally deploy some of those strategies. And those strategies include And those strategies include, uh, making sure that we're actually doing more marketing. Because we don't market, um, Oakland even to ourselves, let alone to others outside Oakland. To let folks know about the activities that we have, the restaurants we have. And we have a lot of gems across District Two, including Chinatown and Little Saigon. Where stores are and restaurants are not open late. I am going to be working with those communities to create a nighttime strategy. So that whether it's downtown or those communities will have an opportunity for more business later at night.
Thank you, Nikki. Harold, same question.
We've lost a lot of revenue because Oakland isn't open again. Uh, many of the businesses that support, uh, are supported by City Hall being open. The workers that come in and, and service them for lunch and for other services aren't there. So the first thing we need to do is we need to actually bring Oakland, Oakland open again. Uh, the second thing is that we have to understand what makes Oakland special. There are four key areas that Oakland offers that San Jose and San Francisco don't. We've never really developed those. We talk about the port and we recognize that it's a jewel. But we've never really extended the opportunity to make the port magnificent in the same way. That we could look at Long Beach as being a benchmark. We've never leveraged the African-American community. We've heard that mentioned tonight, but we've never supported them. We've never talked about really engaging the people to make sure that they would come back to Oakland. Uh, the, the notion that we're going to save seventy-five dollars, uh, per business in Chinatown. And raise taxes on everyone else is a disincentive to bring organizations to Oakland. The twenty million dollars expected from the revenue of another tax during the pandemic. As opposed to the two hundred million that we need for revenue and to be able to pay for the services we want. It's not gonna get us there, and it really is kind of, um, slap in the face to the other businesses that have supported us during the pandemic. We have to be more creative, and we have four different ways to do it, and I have an opportunity to be able to share that with you later.
Thank you, Harold. Question number eight, which might be our last question, maybe we'll get one more, but this one starts with you, Harold. What specific public service experience do you have working collaboratively to produce outcomes for constituents or a community?
I have, I have, I have an extensive, sorry, amount of public service working with youth organizations. Uh, I have, um, I'm currently the person who lives in Oakland who helps run scouting. As a result of that, I'm working with schools, I'm working with parks and recreation, I'm working with religious organizations, I'm working with nonprofits. To be able to provide places for kids. You know, we didn't do that during the pandemic. The Parks and Recs was shut down. We didn't have an opportunity to have our kids have peace and safe, uh, places to go. And so I've been a part of that. Uh, when you look at, uh, Oakland Lacrosse or Oakland Rotary, uh, or Inroads, or a variety of other areas where I've worked. Um, they've caught, they've crossed different racial, cultural, economic bounds. In Oakland Lacrosse, we have the pleasure of providing two thousand students the opportunity to play a sport that they never would have played before. And they don't pay one cent to do so. Uh, those are, um, bounds that I had to reach to talk to people in the business community. To raise resources, to talk to parents, to earn their trust, to make sure that we have people who are engaged. To have the right leadership to look for facilities. Uh, there are a variety of different areas where I've worked, and I'd look forward to people going to, uh, HaroldForDistrictTwo.com to see more.
Thank you, Harold. Nikki, same question.
So, um, District Two is the, one of the most diverse districts in all of Oakland, and it is the district that has the highest proportion. Of Asian-American and Pacific Islander residents. I'm proud to be the first Filipina council member to represent. My API community as well as all of our residents in District Two in Oakland, and my approach is about collaboration. We know that during the pandemic, there's been rising anti-Asian hate. That API women and elders have been targeted. And I have worked with the Chinatown community and listened to the Chinatown community, and we have worked together to ensure that there is an increased police presence. That has been ongoing since July of last year. We were able to create a dedicated Chinese liaison officer. We've been able to create a business improvement district. Similarly, in Little Saigon. We have been able to increase the police presence. We just opened a police substation, and we now have a Vietnamese-speaking liaison officer. And in both areas, I have supported, uh, the creation of small business supports. In Chinatown, I have, uh, supported, uh, community ambassadors, both with our city budget as well as private fundraising. The other thing I want to mention is that the majority of Oaklanders are renters. And even before becoming a council member, I've been an advocate for housing rights. Ten days after the eviction, uh, ten days after the COVID, um, shelter-in-place started. Because of my collaboration with tenant organizations and tenants. We passed the state's strongest COVID eviction moratorium, and that is still in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm getting the, the notice from our tech folks in the background that, um, we have reached. That was our last question, and so now I'm going to invite each candidate to make a one-minute closing statement. And on this one, we're gonna start with you, Nikki.
Thank you. Um, so fellow Oaklanders, we've accomplished a lot in the last four years. But let me be perfectly clear, the challenges that Oakland faces have grown deeper. I started a job, launched successful programs for violence prevention, homelessness solutions, affordable housing. And expanded city services, and now we need to finish that job by bringing those programs to scale. So that we can meet this crisis and solve problems citywide. I finish what I start, and with a second term, we can once again make Oakland the city we know is possible. I have the endorsements of the Alameda County Democratic Party, the Alameda Labor Council, the California Nurses Association. Oakland Firefighters, Oakland Tenants Union, Sierra Club, Planned Parenthood Advocates Marmontay, and many. Proud to earn your vote. Please go to my website for more information. Dot com, Nikki number four, Oakland dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Harold, you have one minute.
Thank you so much for this forum. You know, public safety is no longer a priority here in Oakland. Four months into the pandemic with no vaccines available and job losses by the thousands. Sickness and death by the hundreds and violence on the rise. Our leadership called for an immediate fifty percent reduction of our police force, and it's never changed the position. Even with crime, with, um, all the other things that have been happening. Since I've joined the race, Gavin Newsom is threatening to sue Oakland for nearly five million dollars. Because of the way they've handled the unhoused issue. Sixty-nine million dollars has gone to organizations our leadership supports. To provide services for the poor, and we have no clear record of where the money's gone. Those leaderships blocked appointees to stack commissions. With their own appointees in case they didn't win the office next term. The same way the Republicans blocked Obama's Supreme Court appointees. We have a disconnect in Oakland. We need to realize that people are cert, are hurting at every single level. And they have no plan to make it better. My academic and professional background make me qualified to lead, but my experiences and my willingness to work with others. Make me really important to make you represented in city.
Thank you, Harold. Okay, I want to say thank you to both of our candidates, Nikki Fortunato-Bass and Harold Lowe. Uh, being in the public eye and being part of this kind of work, uh, we know is very demanding. So the rest of us really appreciate your willingness to serve, and we thank you, uh, to all of our participants, uh, your interest. And, uh, in making educated choices. So I think we have a poll here before we break. Is our tech team gonna launch a poll to give us a little bit of feedback? Here we go. Um, if you could just take a, a few seconds to let us know whether this forum gave you helpful information. Um, question here about use of technology registering and attending the forum. So that'll be up for a second or two. Um, next, I want to invite you to please visit our website, LWVOakland.org for information about our regular and expanded services. Tonight's program, um, is being recorded and will be on our website in three languages. And also available on many platforms, including K-pop and YouTube. Uh, a reminder that a ballot is being mailed to every voter starting on October tenth. Registration and voting links are also on our website. And also, when you get ready to complete your ballot, uh, you might want to check out Voter's Edge, which gives, gives you all the background information. Candidates and ballot measures just for your individualized ballot. It's a very, it's a great project, um, of the League of Women Voters in collaboration with tech volunteers from Maplight. And as a final reminder, the League of Women Voters does the hands-on work of defending democracy year-round. We hope you will join us. This ends our program. Thank you all, and have a good evening.